Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's 7:00 PM and time to begin our meeting. At first here, we will begin with an invocation led by Commissioner Baker, followed by the flag salute led by Commissioner Gerber. Please stand.
I pray, Lord, as we near the Thanksgiving season, may we look around and really take a look at how blessed we are to live in Yukon, surrounded by townspeople who truly care about the place they live and the betterment of their community and their fellow citizens. May we do the best we can to uphold the traditions of this town. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Chairman Taylor.
Here.
Vice Chair Baker.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Gerber.
Here.
Commissioner Geis.
Here.
Item one will be the approval of the minutes of October 14th meeting, 2019. Do we have any corrections or additions? Or do we have a motion for approval? I move we approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please, Kathy.
Commissioner Geis.
Yes.
Commissioner Gerber.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Vice Chair Baker.
Yes.
Chairman Taylor.
Yes. Item two is the visitors section. Is if there's anyone here that would like to address the committee here about a non-agenda item, now would be the time to step forward. Seeing none, we will proceed. Item three, consideration of the resolution determining that the Yukon-Frisco-Vandemar Economic Development Project Plan is in conformance with the City of Yukon's Comprehensive Plan of 2030 and recommending that the City Council approve and adopt the Yukon-Frisco-Vandemar Economic Development Project Plan. Yes, sir. Say your name and address, please.
My name is Jeff Saban. I'm a partner at the Center for Economic Development Law. We're the city's Economic Development Council.
Okay.
And we've been working with them, city staff, and the city manager's office, and Mr. Miller, and the mayor's office, to come up with a sales tax increment district along Frisco Road north of I-40. In your package, you should have a presentation that I'm just going to go over some basics about how tax increment financing works, and then give a short summary of the specific project plan that we've put together.
Go ahead.
So, if you go to the page that shows the TIF model illustration, it kind of explains or shows how tax increment financing works. You start out with a base tax level, in this case, a base sales tax. That level will continue to be, to go to the city's general fund according to state law. But for a project within the geography of an increment district, any new tax revenues that go into the project will be collected into an apportionment fund and used for specific authorized project costs in a project plan. At the conclusion of the TIF district, all that new revenue will go into the city's coffers pursuant to law, so there'll be a brand-new tax base, hopefully expanded tax base. The project plan itself is a governing document for the increment district. It sets and illustrates the boundaries of the increment district, which is where TIF is collected, and the project area, which is where TIF can be expended. It lists the authorized project costs, and that list serves as a budget for how TIF can be expended and what the limits are. It describes and authorizes specific entities to carry out the project plan, describes methods of financing that can be used, what sources of revenues are anticipated, and a timeframe for expenditures. And then it illustrates or describes any proposed improvements and describes any needed changes that might need to happen to the city's regulations to make the project happen. TIF districts are set up under the Local Development Act, which is the law that was passed after a constitutional amendment passed in 1990. The statute was put into effect in 1992. The legislature gave specific guidelines about how TIF can be used. It needs to be happened where there's either difficult or no investment growth or development occurring. There needs to be clear standards on how TIF is expended so that you prevent unfair competitive advantages to recipients of TIF revenues. TIF revenues cannot be used to supplant normal public functions, and there needs to be close conjunction with other economic development efforts and other entities. There's also some external input that goes into creating a TIF district. A review committee is set up under state law that each county sets up that basically involves the affected taxing jurisdictions. First, tail tax district, that's pretty much only the city and the county. If it was ad valorem, you'd also have the school district and the vote tech, things like that, everybody who would issue an ad valorem tax. So, their role is, they get together and they review the draft project plan that staff and council have formulated, and they make specific findings and give a recommendation to the city council. Their findings involve the eligibility under the state law and what the financial and economic impacts of the project are supposed to be. Moving on, I guess, to the specifics about the proposed project plan here. The project geography page shows the specific boundaries of the project area, which is where TIF revenue can be spent, and the increment district, where increment revenue can be collected. In this particular instance, they share the same boundaries. And if you look at the map, it hugs kind of both sides of Frisco Road, but primarily east of Frisco Road, north of I-40, and north of the curve on Vandeman Avenue. The area is currently undeveloped. Background is why the city's considering this project. They were approached by a developer who owns land, part of the land within the proposed area for a commercial mixed-use project. It's currently still in development stages, but it's anticipated to feature restaurants, hotel, a large retail complex, some office buildings, and an entertainment feature. The project is supposed to require some significant public assistance, primarily infrastructure improvements and drainage improvements. But the terms of any assistance that the city is going to provide have not yet been finalized, and they will be subject to a separate agreement that's currently being negotiated. The purpose of the project plan, in terms of eligibility, it qualifies as a reinvestment area, which is an area that needs significant public improvement to attract major investment or expand employment, which are the project's two primary objectives. The specific actions that are proposed under the project plan are some increased design approval for whatever projects go into the TIF district, and then the construction and installation of public improvements and infrastructure. If I'm going fast, too fast, let me know. If you have questions, feel free to speak up. So, the project plan creates, or would create, increment district number two, city of Yukon. The first one is the area south of I-40 and east of Frisco Road. That includes the Archdiocese tract and that retail power center on Garth Brooks. The proposed sales tax increment formula, this is the amount of the new sales taxes that would be generated onsite that the city would apportion for project cost purposes is 90% of their undedicated sales taxes, which is a 1.8% effective incremental tax rate. All of the city's dedicated sales taxes and the 0.2% of their undedicated sales taxes would continue to go how they would normally be apportioned. The effective date for the increment district is proposed to be deferred to a later date. This is something that the Local Development Act specifically allows for. It allows for a period up to 10 years for the city to make that determination for that creation date. And the city wants to do this so that the negotiations with the developer can go further along and so that less of that 15-year statutory life is eaten up in negotiations and construction. The city is designated as the primary implementing entity, but the Yukon Economic Development Authority is also an authorized implementing entity. I think you'd be anticipated that YEDA would be a party to any economic development agreement that the council would consider. The city manager is designated as the person in charge of implementation. He'll be the point person for purposes of Department of Commerce contacts and whatnot. The budget is based on a series of projections provided on information that the developer has provided us to date. And that total authorized project cost budget is $43.5 million. Six and a half million of that would be improvements, which include transportation, infrastructure, and public amenities. Up to $35 million is set aside for development financing assistance. That would include costs for land acquisition, improvements that might be privately constructed, tenant improvements, and job creation incentives. It also, the public cost budget also lists out $1 million for project implementation, which includes the city's admin and organizational costs involved with setting up the increment district, any design, legal, or engineering costs associated with the public costs. That budget, like I said, was based on information that the proposed developer for a small portion of it has provided us, and that information is on the next page where it is titled Financial Impacts. The estimated private investment is estimated to be about $70.7 million. And the estimated sales tax revenue generation, based on an average $300 a square foot in sales, $670,000 retail square footage, a 10-year absorption rate, and assuming a five-year average vacancy rate, is between about $414,000 a year in the near term and up to $4 million a year over the longer term. The only public revenues that are going to be affected by this project are the city's undedicated sales tax portion that's listed as increment. The other taxing jurisdictions will experience the full benefits of the new development. Temporary and permanent employment onsite, which is undetermined at the moment, will also have multiplier effects throughout the rest of the community. The planning commission's role in this is to look at it in terms of your familiarity with the city's comprehensive planning and make a determination that this is in line with the city's comprehensive plan, and then to provide a recommendation to the city council that they should either approve or not approve the proposed project plan. The project plan does not specifically encumber or pledge any revenues for any specific purpose other than the specific, the general project cost budget categories. Any specific expenditure will have to be authorized by a separate economic development agreement. Are there any questions?
Anybody have a question to this gentleman? This is something that we've already gone through on TIF Part One, and now this is just coming, bringing it forward to the north side of Interstate 40 along Frisco Road.
The 150 acres that lie west of Frisco, is it still our thought that that will stay, not be reannexed over to the city, that that will be part of Yukon?
The park property is what you're talking about?
Yes.
The sports park? No. It's not anticipated that we would return that to Oklahoma City.
Anybody else? Okay. Would someone care to make the motion?
Is the resolution title sufficient?
That's correct.
I'll read it.
Go ahead.
The move of resolution determining that Yukon-Frisco-Vandemar Economic Development Project Plan is in conformance with the City of Yukon Comprehensive Plan 2030 and recommend that the city council approve and adopt the Yukon-Frisco-Vandemar Economic Development Project Plan.
Do we have a second?
I second that.
No, a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion, or does anybody in the audience have anything they want to speak to on this? Seeing none, call the roll, please, Kathy.
Chairman Taylor.
Yes.
Vice Chair Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Commissioner Gerber.
Yes.
Commissioner Geis.
Yes.
Thank you. Item four is to hear a request by Jason Emret, Cedar Creek, Inc., on behalf of KG Holdings, L.C., WEP Land Holdings, LLC, for replat of a final plat located at West End Point Addition, Phase Two, Section Two. This is Lot 7B-2, Block 1 of West End Point Addition, Phase Two, and Lot 7B-2, Block 1, replat of Lot 7B, Block 1, of the replat of seven, Lot 7, Block 1, in the city of Yukon, Canadian County. Does anyone here want to speak to this, or yes?
Jason Emret, Cedar Creek Consulting, 11912 North Penn, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. Currently, right now, there's two lots on lots, or two buildings on Lot 7B, and the point of this replat, of the replat, of the replat is to essentially split the lot into two different lots so that each building is on its own lot.
Anybody have any questions to this gentleman?
And different owners of the two lots eventually?
Potentially, yes.
Any other? Okay. We need someone to read the draft motion.
Yeah, I'll take it. In the case of the application for replat of Lot 7B-2, Block 1 of the replat of Lot 7B, Block 1, of the replat of Lot 7, Block 1, of West End Addition, Phase Two, Section Two, also referred to as a lot split, submitted by Cedar Creek Consulting on behalf of Ken McGee. We have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with staff findings. I move that this item be approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Anyone want to comment on this? Call the roll, please, Kathy.
Chairman Taylor.
Yes.
Vice Chair Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Commissioner Gerber.
Yes.
Commissioner Geis.
Yes.
Item five, there are requests by Mark Grubbs of Grubbs Consulting, LLC, for a deviation on a planned unit development located at 901 East Main, Yukon, Oklahoma.
Good evening. Mark Grubbs, 1800 South Sarah Road, Grubbs Consulting, on behalf of Hapken. The amendment that you have before you tonight addresses two things. One, it addresses the fencing, the fencing along the west boundary of the storage tract. The original PUD required a black-coated chain-link fence along the west boundary, along with trees planted on a, I think, 20-foot centers along that west boundary. During the development and after getting all those trees in, the developer realized that it was going to be hard to maintain the west boundary with all those trees in it. So, what, the red line is the west boundary, and I think you have an exhibit in your PUD package there. And the green line, which would just connect the buildings, is the proposed new location. And that comes up at the northwest corner and also in between the buildings down at the south end. All those trees are irrigated, easier for maintenance. So, that's the first part of the amendment. Is there any questions on that part of the amendment?
Those trees are already in, correct?
Those trees are planted, yes.
So, the trees are on the outside of the fence instead of the inside of the fence?
Correct. And also hides the fence somewhat, too, so. The second part of the amendment is due to an oversight on my part in the original application. On March 11th, this came before this board, I think, with the exception of, I believe, Commissioner Geis. I do not believe he was involved in this. But we represented to this commission, to staff, to the adjacent neighbors that we would be building 1,200 to 1,400 square-foot units on each side of a duplex, and also 2,100 square-foot on the single-family. We were notified by city staff on October 21st that the plans came in for building permit approval based on this, and it, the oversight was that they exceeded the 35% maximum coverage. This PUD amendment changes the 35% coverage to the, to 60% on the duplex tract and 45% on the R1 tract, which is the tract abutting the residential. The, we've also met with the HOA to the north, and they are here in support of this. They don't want a smaller unit to be built within the neighborhood. The neighborhood's gated, maintained by the HOA. Everything's mowed, maintained, and kept up by the HOA. And they want us, as we want to, build what we represented we would build from the very beginning. I believe you have a exhibit in your package that looks like this, that gives you, gives a representation of the coverage. I've went beyond to expand this to the north so you can see what it would look like in comparison to the aerial of, to the north. You can see that not a lot of difference from what you would see north of here to what we are actually proposing there. So, with that, that's why that amendment is here before you today. We just asked for your approval to build what we represented we would build from the beginning.
As I understand it, if we did not approve this, your duplexes would be under 1,000 feet, or?
Approximately 800 square feet.
We don't, and the houses could not be what you represent. They would have to be.
They would not be built to what we represented to everybody, which they, which I think everybody, it's, it's been designed this way, and it's built this way for, to support all of this. So, not till the last minute did we even realize that we had the oversight.
So, they should have been in the original putt?
It should have been in the original putt.
So, the, the single-family homes that are along the Rosewood boundary will still be approximately 2,100?
That's, that's condition space. Yeah.
Not going to, that's not going to change.
It, the 45% allows a little bit in excess of the 2,100 square feet.
But not, you're not going to reduce those down to 16 or 18 or anything?
That's not the intention. The range that we originally represented was 16 to 2,100.
That's what I thought.
Correct.
Original drawing, 16 to 2,100.
But we're asking for the coverage to obviously build the larger size, so. And the.
But not to go below 1,600?
Not to go below 1,600, correct. And I'm fine with adding that in as the condition. I know that the HOA president is here. If you'd like to hear from her, as we did meet with her, and I stated that they supported this, so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do you have anything down this way?
I just, I just want to echo Chairman Taylor's comment that we're really, you know, from the beginning, we weren't interested in 800-square-foot duplexes, and we're still not, and we're not interested in 1,600 or below 1,600-square-foot houses. And so.
With a gated community, it just.
It makes no sense.
Makes no sense. Yes. That's all you have?
That's all I have.
Okay. Before we have comments from the audience, we need to get a motion on the floor. Would you like to care to read the draft motion?
In the case of the application.
I'm sorry, can I, there was one comment from staff regarding the backyard coverage, and I just wanted to address, because they asked a question of me, and it says staff believes it should be clarified are a minimum percentage of green space in the backyard preserved? I would just like to say that we would agree that 60% of the backyard would be preserved as, to be in grass, so. That way, that it's on record that we came up with that coverage.
They included, they included that in their, in their conditions. Make sure that for developers, have you read four, five, and six?
I have.
And you're.
And I agree to those. I just added that we agree to the 60% coverage when I'm back building.
So, to make sure, as long as you've read those four, okay. In the case of the application for PUD amendment submitted by Grubbs Consulting on behalf of U Storage OK.com LLC, we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. Find ourselves in agreement with staff findings. I move that the planned unit development amendment document for the subject property be recommended for approval to the city council with the following conditions. Number one, execute the revisions found in items four through six.
Do we have a second?
I second that.
Now, if there's anyone that would care to speak to this amendment, you may step forward, say your name, and keep your comments to approximately three minutes. And your address, please.
My name's Rhonda Dennis, 817 T. Rose Drive, Yukon, Oklahoma, 73099.
Can you pull that down just?
Sure.
Thank you.
I am the president of the Rosewood HOA, which, for the neighborhood directly north of where Yukon crossings would be. As Mr. Grubbs said, we've met, we've met prior to the development being built. We had a lot of meetings, worked out things. They were very willing to work with us, wanted to make things good for us. As many of you probably remember, we were very concerned about duplexes as well, affecting our property values. So, we've worked with Mr. Grubbs and Mr. Grabbit to reach a compromise. And part of this, the size, the home sizes and the materials were part of our compromises, that we, we wanted higher-end sizes and higher-end materials. So, my basic point is, is I am encouraging you guys to allow the agreements we can get the size of homes, quality of homes that we were looking for in order to maintain our property values. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone here, anyone else care to comment on this proposal?
Mr. Chairman, if they're willing to have a minimum square footage, maybe that wouldn't be a bad thing to add to this as well.
Okay. We would need to reopen the reading of it or the addition of it. Bill, would you care to add on to that, and then we'll try to hit second for it?
Okay.
So, Mr. Grabbit, who is the developer, just asked that I point out that in the original meeting minutes, it did say on the single-family, 15 to 2,100, but I also talked to him, we just told you 1,600, and we would care with that. And then 1,200 was the minimum size on the duplex unit that we.
Okay. In the case of the application for PUD amendment submitted by Grubbs Consulting on behalf of U Storage OK.com LLC, we have read the staff report, received testimony at the public hearing. Find ourselves in agreement with staff findings. I move that the planned unit development amended document for the subject property be recommended for approval to the city council with the following conditions. Number one, execute the revisions found in items four through six. Number two, minimum size of duplex shall be 1,200 square feet. Number three, minimum size of single-family home shall be 1,600 square feet.
Now, do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Chairman Taylor.
Yes.
Vice Chair Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Commissioner Gerber.
Yes.
Commissioner Geis.
Yes.
Item six is to hear a request by Mark Grubbs, Grubbs Consulting, for LLC for a planned unit development for a. unit development for a brigand business park located at fifteen oh eight and fifteen sixteen Commerce Street, Yukon, Oklahoma. Lots four and five of block one, Westport Commerce Park, in addition to Yukon Canadian County, Oklahoma.
Good evening, Mark Grubbs, eighteen hundred South Sarah Road, on behalf of the applicant. This item and the following item are companion items. The first item you have before you is a PUD, second item is the preliminary plat associated with the PUD. The existing, the property is located just on the south side of Commerce Street, just west of Westport Boulevard. The current property is zoned C three. And, and the PUD before you is a C three base PUD with a few modifications. One of the main modifications is the fifty-foot setback requirement that we're requesting to be lowered to thirty-five feet, except for around the cul-de-sac. Towards the south end of the property where we reduced that to twenty-five feet. The width of the property there just puts a little bit of constraint on the property. The property to the north of this is, this, what we're proposing is an office warehouse use. The property north of this is office warehouse, the property east of this is C three, the property west of this is zoned industrial and to the south is a church. We feel that this PUD is, fits within what is developed in its surrounding and I have reviewed, I've reviewed all the PUD requested revisions and we agreed to three. Number four, I've discussed with staff and the comment says side yard setbacks show me minimum building code requirements. We do agree with that, but the minimum side yard setback, it goes on to say minimum side yard setbacks should be permitted to be ten feet. We have five feet within the PUD, we've discussed this with staff and staff is fine with that. We do have building code requirements that we have to meet though, so we would ask that we not put the ten feet in there. I have agreed with number five. Number six, it says that metal, exposed metal should be clad in brick and we just requested that that be modified to say clad in approved materials within the PUD. The rest that we concur with on staff's recommendations, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, we've just asked for your approval.
Well, why are you wanting to change from a C three commercial district there? I mean, those people bought homes on around the corner from there and to the east of there, thinking it's gonna be light commercial and who knows what's gonna go in under this PUD?
Well, we've actually went in and stricken a lot of the C three permitted uses.
Why? I mean.
Why, I mean.
Why don't you just ask for a rezone instead of a PUD?
I mean, what are you proposing?
I don't know.
The C three, the C three is the current base, we kept the C three base and removed some uses and we worked with staff quite a bit on those uses and, but the main reason, so my client asked me, you know, should we rezone it? I said, you know, you can develop it, you can develop it right now with the C three, but the building limit line does constrain you a little bit. So my thoughts were, let's try for, let's try to write a PUD that would be acceptable to the city of Yukon, that would reduce that building limit line and, and in turn for that, we'll give up some uses, we'll add some additional landscaping that's not required and screening requirements and ask to see if they're, to ask for their approval.
Or you've got a whole bunch of things that you've said that you would allow in this.
I will say that originally we came in and asked, our original PUD as we proposed it, I came in and said, see, all C three uses will be permitted except for this.
Yeah.
And staff asked me to come back and list what would be accepted. Well, your C three uses are forever long and so I listed them that way. To me, it doesn't matter, but staff wanted it done that way, so I can, I agreed with them and moved on. So, but we did strike quite a few uses and I think staff could, would agree with, would agree with me on that.
So you have, you have no, like, set plans for any type of thing in there, it's just building this business park and then?
It's a business park and I would, I would, I foresee it to be similar to what's north of it. It's an office warehouse type use, pretty quiet use, really.
The way that the PUD is written and the way that staff had requested it to be written is a little bit misunderstood. Mr. Grubbs is correct in that we had asked them to specifically lay out what is it that you want to have approved within this PUD? And those uses that are listed are no different than what is usually listed under the C three district. What is different is we have asked him to strike a lot of those uses so that this PUD is actually more restrictive than a C three use would be. The intent of the PUD was to vary the setback. You cannot do that under straight zoning. So with the PUD, it gives him that flexibility to, to flex those lines as he says, because towards the rear of that cul-de-sac, the lots are getting narrow.
But also under a C three use seats, there would, under a PUD, there would be things allowed that wouldn't be allowed under a C three.
There could be.
Yes.
But in this case, there are not.
How do we know? It hadn't developed yet, it hadn't sold any of it.
Because the only uses that are permitted are these uses that are specifically listed in the PUD. No other uses are permitted other than these uses that are listed.
Well, we've, we've heard that before on, I don't mean to say that you wouldn't do that, but we've had other PUDs in here that have not held to what they, what they were designed for. You would agree on that?
How was that? I mean, city staff would not, would not permit that use. So I, I don't, I mean, you're right, I mean, your staff has to regulate that, so you have a PUD, just like you have C three, I mean, staff has to regulate whether or not that use is permitted in C three. Here, as Cindy stated, it's more restrictive and your staff has to regulate that.
So on your, on your, your drawing of the cul-de-sac, where is, where is north, where's the, where are the houses in Westport?
North is up, huh?
Yeah, nor, what's the north side of that whole drawing?
What is this?
No, what is, which is the north side? I can't.
This is, north is up.
Okay.
This is Commerce Street.
Okay. And?
This is industrial over here, this is Westport Commerce Park, of like lot five or six, seven, eight, this is lot three, block one of Westport Commerce, Commerce Park, this is C three, this is industrial, this is C three and the church is down here.
Well, actually, C three on the north is just the other half of Commerce Street, is it not?
C three on the north is just on the north side of Commerce Street.
And it, it backs up to the residential area?
I believe so, yes. Like I said, when, when he came to me, he asked me, you know, I said, the building limit line's a little restrictive, we can put the street in now, just like we're proposing, the only thing he has is a larger building limit line, but he has more allowed uses, more allowed uses than, I, we've stricken quite a few of those and we've added landscape for, you know, for y'all to consider, so.
I just have a question. Basically, it has to do with the minimum side yard setback for interior lots shall be zero with a minimum building setback of ten feet required along the south boundary?
A building could cross the, one, a single building could cross two lines, so you could have one building, one guy buys, a guy buys two lots, he can build across both of those in that case.
Okay, but for all intents and purposes, they were gonna basically put something different on each lot? How are you gonna get it with a zero setback? Is that?
It would, it would be one building with.
Right, just to give you the flexibility to do that?
Mm-hmm. Other, otherwise you're, otherwise they're gonna be setting off five to ten feet. Maybe more, just depending on what size the building goes in there.
And then the other deviations are, yeah, the setback goes from fifty to thirty-five on the front lots, twenty-five on the rear lots.
That's, the front setback around this cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
If you take it out to fifty, it's almost, you know, and the, the property's only three hundred foot wide and so if you have a hundred foot here, then you're only left with a hundred foot on each side, that leaves you a fifty foot of depth.
But the setback on the back would be ten feet.
That's correct. Down here, there's a fifteen foot UE, so it couldn't extend into that, so fifteen here on the south, but ten, ten here abutting commercial and ten there abutting industrial.
Does the south end go all the way up to Tenth Street, I mean, to Vandeman?
No. I don't know how many feet that is, but it's quite a, quite a bit.
It's about three hundred feet.
Is it?
Yeah, there's a church there, if you remember right, that abuts it.
Yeah, the south side.
Other questions? I know we have some folks in the audience that want to speak to this, I'm going to, I'm gonna hold off on asking for a motion until we hear from some other people. Anyone else would like to speak to this? Please state your name and address, please.
John Nail, nine oh one Stone Creek Boulevard. I'm here with the Stone Creek organization. What I'm hearing is that they're wanting to cram more on that lot than it was designed for. So they're wanting to put that street in there so they can cram more buildings on that one lot, which creates more traffic. Something else that was an extremely red flag to me, when the, when the staff asked for a brick veneer, he said that's negotiable. That says to me as a developer and builder, cheap. In other words, you don't agree for a brick veneer, you say it's negotiable, in other words, we can fight about that later. So there's two things, we're wanting to put a street down that lot that's not designed for it, to cram more buildings in there and then push them closer to the edges and then put siding or metal for all the neighbors to look at and then to create more traffic. And the rest of those lots are not developed yet, but when they're developed, you're, you're setting a precedent to let the other lots do as, by the way, is the developer here tonight? Is he? He's not here tonight, there you go. So we're, you're gonna set a precedence for the rest of those lots to do a PUD and they're gonna say, well, you let these guys do it, why don't you let us do it? And you let them put siding on the buildings and cram those things next to each other and push them toward the street, why can't we do that as well? So we care about Yukon, we're here tonight, I don't know who the developer is, I haven't met him, he's not here tonight. So we're here, I'm, I'm a developer, I'm a builder and I know you gotta do the right thing with land and property and I appreciate the fact that you guys hear those that are for something and not for something. So I'm definitely not the naysayer wanting to stop things, but I am definitely against cramming things in, setting a precedent and then hearing someone say, I don't wanna do a brick veneer, we'll negotiate about that. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Is there someone else that'd like to speak to this in the audience? Please say your name and address, please.
David Goodwin, seven thirty-one Kingsgate Road, Yukon, Oklahoma, seven three oh nine nine. I would be curious as to what the remaining allowed uses are and also I'd be curious as to how many buildings you would anticipate in the PUD if they built out as individual units as opposed to building across the lot lines? How many maximum buildings could it accommodate?
David, please address your comments to the committee.
Oh, okay, my apologies.
Sorry. Go ahead and answer.
There are eight proposed lots within the preliminary plat that, that follows this item, so right now, max we show is eight, if there was not to be joined.
So that would create six more lots and I'd be curious as to what the building size would accommodate on those lots as well.
There's a minimum of twelve thousand square feet is provided for and it allows up to fifty percent coverage within the city of Yukon code, so six thousand square feet on twelve thousand, if the lot's bigger, fourteen thousand, it's gonna be up to seven thousand. So fifty percent coverage is allowed by the city of Yukon.
I'm, I'm having visions of Rockwell Industrial Park, a prop, an area I'm very familiar with and, and would not care to live next to, given the opportunity to not do.
You live in the, you would.
I live in Westport.
You live down that street and?
The main rag.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Are there, are there retail uses that would not be allowed?
Well, C three, yeah, would not allow, I mean, if it's C three base, your heavier commercial would not be allowed. Mitchell, like?
I just mean retail, just straight, are there retail things that would not be allowed?
Retail, this is a pretty good laundry list of items that could be in there that could be retail, there's a floor shop, there's all kinds of things in here.
But you're correct in that it would be the smaller retail, just based on the, the size of the lot, that would be, that they would have to choose from.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Taylor?
My name is Greg Wedman, I live at thirteen oh five Limestone Place in Stone Creek. I've spent a little over thirty-one years either living in Westport at six eighty-nine Hamlet Lane or at my current residence and so I've spent a lot of years going up and down Westport Boulevard and I'm here to support mostly what Mr. Nail had spoke about, the quality of anything that's going in that area, for those of us that have to travel through there, whether we're talking about traffic or the quality of the buildings putting in. So I just wanted to support that, staying like it is for now, until, as you said, the PUDs leave a lot of variance as to what could possibly happen in the future, so I'd stand for it staying the way it is.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Someone else, anybody else before we call for a motion? Seeing none, would someone care?
Can I address their concerns? That, as far as the, one of the things that they're mentioning was the architectural facade. I want to make it clear that I was not opposing brick. The approved materials within this are brick, masonry, stone and architectural metals and stucco. I can take out, I can, we can take out whatever we would like to there, it's not, we're not trying to be cheap as it was called. So again, it's currently zoned C three, there's a lot of uses that can be used within C three and it can be platted, it could be platted this way now, with C three uses, it's just the building limit line is the, is the deal. And like I said, we, we struck a lot of the uses I think that the neighbors would not want. want or appreciate in that area, so we are trying to, well, we're trying to propose something. Maybe, I mean, obviously, not everybody agrees that it's better, but we are trying to propose something that we think is better there, so.
Thank you.
May I say something else?
Real quick.
When you, when you're trying to take a piece of property and put more into it than it's supposed to be into it, that's cheap to me. When you're trying to put more buildings crammed onto one lot than it's designed for, that's cutting corners. Thank you.
The other last minute. Okay, we will proceed now. Would someone care to read the draft motion?
I'll take it. In the case of the application for a preliminary plat by Grubbs Consulting LLC, on behalf of Brighton Capital LLC, we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with the staff recommendations cited in the staff report. I move that this item be recommended for approval to the city council with the following condition. Number one, applicant must add adjacent property owners to the preliminary plat prior to the plat being forwarded to the city council for consideration.
Mr. Chairman?
That's the wrong...
I think we're on... That's the wrong one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That is the...
Gotcha, thank you.
That's the final.
In the case of the application for rezoning submitted by Grubbs Consulting on behalf of Brighton Capital LLC, we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing. We find ourselves in agreement with staff findings. I move that this planned unit development document for the subject property be recommended for approval to the city council with the following conditions. Number one, execute the revisions found in items number three through number eight.
Okay. When we call for a vote, a yes vote would be to approve the pud, a no vote would be to turn it down. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Chairman, who's the second?
Oh, I'm sorry, who has, do we have a second? Anybody care to give a second on this?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Now call for the vote.
Chairman Taylor?
No.
Vice Chair Baker?
No.
Commissioner Davis?
No.
Commissioner Gerba?
No.
Commissioner Geis?
No.
Sorry, sir.
Mr. Chairman, what did we turn this down for?
I didn't feel comfortable with the pud, myself. I don't know what the other gentleman's votes are for.
Okay.
We, when we have done puds in the past, it was, I mean, the pud that Mr. Grubbs spoke to earlier was very specific. There were forty duplexes, there were X number of single-family homes, there was storage, there was retail, there was a fence, and there were trees. I, I knew what was going in there. I am not at all sure of future ownership, of uses, or anything else that fits the character of the neighborhood, which is our charge.
Okay, thank you. Just need something for...
And Judge, since we did not pass the pud, there's no item to go on to number seven, correct?
Correct.
Okay, wait a second. The PUD, I would ask that that preliminary plat be continued, because the preliminary plat can come back before you with modification to the building limit line. That would be the only revision to that preliminary plat that needs to be seen, needs to be seen. So I would ask it be continued. I don't know what the dates for continuance of the planning, next planning commission.
Well, then, after the planning commission, you'd have to go before the council with the same. It has to go...
Right, you denied, you, you denied the PUD, and we can, it can die here. I'm asking that the next item be continued to a...
December ninth would be the next hearing.
You said, you said December ninth?
That's the next planning commission hearing.
Can I check my schedule real quick? Sorry, it's holidays, so I just want to make sure that I can be here.
So Judge, what would I, I can continue this myself? Okay. Then upon the request of the, of Mr. Grubbs, we will continue this until it's December the ninth soon enough for you? Yes, sir. Or we can do it after the first year, if you care for it.
I just had to make sure that my, I, I will be here during December ninth, so continuing December ninth, and that is the preliminary plat item.
Okay, we'll continue the preliminary plat until December ninth? Is there any new business, Mitchell?
No new business tonight.
Mr. Chairman?
Open discussions. Does anybody have anything they'd like to say?
I got something. The Christmas lights are going to go, get fired up on the twenty-third. I'd like to encourage everybody to go out there and take a peek at them. You guys do a lot of hard work out there, and it's really gorgeous.
All right. Do you have anything, Judge, or Cindy, anything else? Anybody else? Then this meeting's adjourned till December the ninth.